Excellent. Today is August 6th, and I will start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and socio-emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self-motivated resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV, and we are operating in conjunction with the changes in the open meeting laws, which allow us to operate on Zoom and take public comment here on Zoom. If there's anybody here who would like to share when the timing is right, and I'll let you know when that is. Our order of business, this app is our call to order, our opening procedures, our agenda review and adoption. We'll have some time for public comment. And then our topic today is the 2020 reopening plan discussion and vote, and then we will adjourn. I'll take a roll call, and then you all can let me know if you are okay with the order of business. And I'll start with Aaron Williams.
Here.
Thank you. Kathy Bates?
Yes, here.
Paul Kendall?
Here, and yes, I'm good with everything.
And we know that Mark Terry is not here. He's having trouble signing on. He's out of town, and so we will move forward. And if he's able to get in at some point, that would be wonderful. So I'll start by asking if there's anybody here from the public who would like to offer some comment at this time before we get started. You can either unmute yourself if you're here, or you can raise your hand. And seeing none, Jim, I will turn it over to you and Mike, I think, to share with us the 2020 reopening plan that I know that you guys have been working on.
Thank you. I'll try to, we've been through a lot of this in numerous meetings, and I want to be respectful of everyone's time and opinions. And so I'll get right into it. As you know, on Monday, we need to submit to the Department of Education a plan for how we are going to operate school system beginning in the fall of 2020. And for our case, it's September 14th of 2020, based on the calendar that we approved at the last meeting. And after going through numerous processes and looking at our buildings, I recommended a couple, two meetings ago, and reiterated at the last meeting that we, I believe we should be starting in a hybrid model. And that's what the plan recommends, is that we start in the hybrid model, a two-three. So a two-in, three-out. I'm going to share my screen just for a second, it'll be easier. That's okay. Can everybody see this okay? This is just a quick synopsis of what I mean by the two-out, three-in. So a cohort A, for instance, half the group would be in Mondays and Tuesdays. Wednesday's a remote day for all students. And then on Thursday and Friday, cohort B comes in. The remote component on Wednesdays is, and will have synchronous component. So meaning the first two hours of that day will be just shortened schedule of the student's schedule and the teacher's schedule for that day. So you'll still be meeting with your classes in person synchronously. And then the other part of the day is for the ability to have IEP meetings, 504 meetings, teacher planning. As we know, moving into any remote or hybrid model is a very different model, which will require a lot of planning and preparation on teachers' part. So we'll have an opportunity on Wednesdays so those educators can be actively ready for the rest of the week, and then the continuance into the next week. We looked at our cohorts of how we would best break our students up, and we actually did a process of looking at our demographics in terms of neighborhoods. And as we started doing that, breaking down streets and quadrants and sections of Ashland, what we really noticed was that in any way we tried breaking neighborhoods down, I believe we would have been participating in a discriminatory practice with some of our neighborhoods that are more wealthy than others. And quite typically, some of our students who are less fortunate would be grouped together all the time. And those who are a little more fortunate would be grouped together as well, and never shall the twine meet, right? As we looked at that, we didn't feel comfortable as an administrative team and to that approach. So looking at the model of A through K for cohort A and cohort B, L through Z, just about 50% of our students in each model would be accounted for and broken up nicely. That being said, we are required to have some of our vulnerable population in all four of these days that we're in session. Some levels of our ELL, some levels of our unique learners, are some of our, not some of, all of our homeless students, et cetera. So that plays a part into our grouping models. And so this is what the hybrid would look like. And I think what I do need from this board is, in order to submit a plan, that this is the model we've chosen to start the year. I think it's critically important to understand that there is a high possibility and high probability that we could move into a remote-only model throughout the year, depending upon the data and the circumstances on the ground, if you will, as to what that looks like. And what we've been working through with principals and our unions and our teaching staff is what does that look like? And what we found is that we believe the best approach is to be consistent, and I'm circling here, with our hybrid learning model, but in a remote setting that would allow for on Mondays and Tuesdays, these students over here on Thursdays and Fridays, the cohort A and B, in fact should be, to be, come together as a full class and have opportunities for all learners at the same time. So the four days would have the opportunity to have all of the students together in the remote environment. Similar to what we would do on Wednesday, it's just, it's for the whole day. And that, you know, this plan has to be shared. I'm going to unshare here. We are required by the commissioner to have this plan shared with our community on Monday when we have to send it into the Department of Ed. So I know I've shared much of this in previous meetings. I did share the document itself with the school committee. And I wanted, before, you know, taking questions or however you want to approach Mrs. Tosti, I want to say thank you to everybody who's been spending numerous hours pulling this information together. And the collaboration has been phenomenal across the board, from principals to directors. And it's a pretty substantial document that I think will answer many, many questions of our community. I will never say that whatever we publish will answer every question, because I think every day we wake up and experience something new with COVID, it creates more questions. But I'm proud of the work we've done in the past 48 hours working with our teachers and our teachers' union and how that impacts this document itself. So I'll leave it there.
Thanks, Jim. I guess a few thoughts before I open up discussion on this. Because we all know that this is something that we've never had to do before. Kids are usually in school every day, all kids, unless they have their own personal reasons for not being there. So coming up with a hybrid plan or a remote plan or anything that doesn't look like what we were doing is new to everybody, including how school committees and superintendents and administrative teams work together to come up with the plan. So we all took our guidance from our respective associations and the DESE and the commissioner in terms of how we work together. And it's certainly my understanding and my belief as I open it up for discussion. And Jim has taken all of our feedback individually. I'm not sure what anybody else has said about anything. But I do believe for the purposes of this discussion, school committee does not make decisions about whether we're spending 20 minutes on math or 30 minutes on ELA, or what part of the day that those things should occur. Those things that are traditionally in the hands of the administration need to remain there. So I would ask that we refrain from commenting on that other than, you know, if you're pleased with what you're seeing, that's great. But we are not going to be making those administrative changes, I don't believe. But certainly because that there are policy implications to all this, as well as budget implications, we need to be comfortable with the plan, and we need to vote on the plan. And so certainly, your voice and your opinion is important as it relates to those areas. So I just wanted to lead in with that, so we just don't get too far down a rabbit hole about how the schedules look and so forth. But at this time, I would like to open it up for comment. I'm going to mute myself, because I do have to apologize. I think there's no chance I'm getting through this meeting without some background noise. But I will mute myself, and I will ask you all to start offering your input, please.
Oh, so if you want, Lori, I can start. I mean, I've already provided some feedback to Jim. And I first want to say, this document is amazingly structured and well-written. The feedback I gave him wasn't substantive as far as changing anything or large concerns. It was more, you know, ensuring that things were covered in all areas and stuff like that. So I've reviewed it now twice, a newer version that he's worked with the AEA on. And, you know, so I just want to thank the overall team for putting together. It's probably, I'm going to go out on a limb and say it's probably one of the most comprehensive and thoughtful plans that Desi's going to receive. So I definitely appreciate the effort, and I don't have any outstanding concerns. I mean, once we submit it, it's not frozen. Obviously, we're going to be adjusting it over the next month to, as all the details are worked out. So, but thematically and structurally, it's, I think, about as comprehensive and thoughtful a document that Desi's going to receive. So thank you to the team for that. If you said something, Lori, you were still unmuted.
There we go. I said thank you for your comments, and I'm wondering who would like to share next? Questions, comments, input? This is our chance, because the intention is to vote on this plan this afternoon.
Yeah, I likewise, you know, we, Jim had sent us the plan, one of the versions, and we were able to, you know, send us, send him comments or questions just to him. So, and then we got today's version about 2:00. So I quickly tried to read it. I didn't get to finish reading it, but I'm with Paul. I mean, it is thorough. Can we ask, can Jim give any comment on, like, how it went, you know, talking with the AEA yesterday and today? Or is that appropriate for him to comment on that, or not?
I think, other than saying that I believe we are all working towards having the hybrid model be our chosen model and working through the logistics of what a dated looks like in the eyes of a teacher and a child, and making sure it's consistent with health and safety requirements, we're on the same page. Well, other than that, no, I can't comment.
Right, and our job today is really just to offer our support for the plan that is being submitted on Monday, or to request any changes. Am I muted?
No, you're not. No, we can hear you, Lori. Yep.
So.
I guess I have a question about the start times and what that would do to the earliest buses. Because I know, I think the Oregon road bus was already at 7:00 last year.
Right, so I think by moving the times a little bit, they were still getting there at a specific time. Claudia, correct me if I'm wrong, 7:20, 7:25 anyway. So they were there waiting, Erin, and then getting off the bus and going. It should not impact the earliest, any earlier start, meaning we shouldn't be running any earlier. The buses were already there. What this is doing is allowing kids to get off the bus and then enter the school more efficiently and starting at 7:30 versus waiting until 7:50.
So we will not have. 7:00 AM?
Say that again.
We won't have a kid getting on a bus before.
Erin Palyne, she might be on here. I would not anticipate that, no. I don't think we have to adjust that piece of it. And we're going, remember, we're going to have more buses for less kids as well in terms of, Mendez isn't going to have all 600 kids riding the bus on any one day.
There was one other spot where it said to put a mask on. And I have to go find it. But I was under the impression we were having all masks on all students regardless of grade.
Correct. We have to make that right. Pre-K through 12 is what I've recommended in the plan.
And there'll be a corresponding policy over the next couple that we will bring forth in regard to that. Because so there's, once we do this, just try to, once we do this, then we need to regroup and figure out and go through which policies are impacted and go through that and bring it back to the school committee for a review and recommendations for those.
And they're coming out almost daily, to be honest, with MASCE, as it relates specifically to COVID, whether it's discipline policies with masks or it's, you know, and I forget the one I saw today, but it has a lot, everything COVID-related, so. Erin, if you can find that, though, let me know.
Yeah, it was somewhere and it stood out, and I should have just left my page there. And then I know I previously spoken to Kathy Silva about the masks with the viewing.
Yep.
So are we looking to have that for everybody at Warren and Pittaway?
Are we look, Kathy, you can answer that, but my answer is no. I mean, families are responsible for their first, their own mask?
No, for the teachers.
Oh, no, it's, again, teachers will have the option of what they, they can have a face shield, right? In addition to a mask. And so if they're more than eight to 10 feet away, they could then not have the mask. That's up to, you know, that's something that's been considered under the CDC. But go ahead, Kathy, if you're.
If you don't mind my interjecting to answer your question, Erin, the way I see it, certainly for the staff that are working with students for whom it's important to have that clear window, we will be able to give them masks. Some people are not going to like wearing those masks, because quite honestly, they're less comfortable. So I don't want to say necessarily that every staff member had a particular building just by nature of the child's age would need to wear it. But let's say, for instance, you're a speech pathologist, you might need to be wearing that clear window mask in order to do the therapy in the speech services. So we're going to make sure that they're available.
But requiring it, no. Available, yes. Like any of the, any of the PPE, I've been very clear with staff. If there's something that makes them feel more comfortable in their role, and specifically whether it's a speech pathologist or if it's a world language teacher who uses their mouth to show and emphasize certain words, we need to know what kind of equipment they would prefer, so we can order that for them specifically. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Or Jim, did you have with having the benefit of Mark being here personally? You know, has he offered you any feedback that would concern you about this plan? Just so that he has a voice here, because he won't have a vote.
No, his comments and concerns that he relayed to me have been exhaustively vetted and actually included within the document I sent out. And any of the comments that, in talking to him, that really are of concern going forward, it's just making sure that we have some details for folks. Not necessarily the plan itself in terms of the two-in, three-out and moving into a remote model if we have to. It's more along the lines of, okay, here's a middle school schedule. We're going to, I'll give you an example, if you don't mind. I'm going to do this, so I think it's important. I'm going to share my screen again. So we might show you here, can you see this?
Yeah.
Okay, that here's what a potential middle school student's schedule would look like. Arriving, last name A through K, D block, A block, B block, C block. This is not cast in stone at this time, right? So that's, so what Mark was saying was, hey, I'd like to see a little more detail on these schedules. And part of the reason there's no detail is because we're still grouping kids. And when we're grouping kids, we don't know what the schedule will act, it may not be D, A, B, C. Conceptually, that's what we would like, you know, and maybe it will work well for the middle school, but the high school, for instance, I'm going to stop sharing, which has a very similar schedule in terms of the four blocks. If we've got students who typically, and Kelly's working through this, typically have, let's say, our F period at the high school has a lot of study halls. We may want to consider how we run our schedule, that first period or last period at the high, at the high school, first period at the middle, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, is a static block, meaning that block will meet all year long. And if the majority of the kids are in study hall that period, it makes good sense that those kids could leave and have the flexibility to leave and not come back to the building earlier. Similarly, in the A period, where instead of having, again, the reducing the number of people inside the building at one time, we could be flexible there. So she's got a lot of work to do in terms of plugging the groupings in and then running the schedule again, and then determining, okay, oh, F block has three times as many study halls, so that needs to be in one of the blocks where we can have less kids in the building at the same, you know. So there's still some work to do with that.
Yeah, and I kind of limited the things that I was talking, gave you feedback about to the things that are needed for Monday.
Correct.
Things like, you know, I think I've mentioned it to you privately before, but, you know, the discipline is the wrong word, but how we, our reactions to different things is also something that, hey, once we get this deadline passed, are going to be very important. If we have teachers that are anxious and students aren't doing what they're supposed to, how are we reacting to, how are we supporting that situation to make sure everyone keeps their heads and doesn't make a bad situation worse? And all those details, there's still a lot of work obviously to do, you know, surrounding all that. But we have a deadline for Monday, and I think maybe it's important, Jim, when you do, when we do share this, that we're very clear on where we are in that process and what we're sharing on Monday is the structural plan that Desi requires that has the fundamental framework for the models that we're supporting and how we're doing those safely, right?
Right, yep.
It's not going to be comprehensive on Monday, saying, okay, if somebody doesn't wear a mask this many times, and we're not going to have all those details. And those details are between August 10th and September 14th need to be worked out, right?
That's right. And what I've said routinely is, once we get this published and online, our principals will hold specific webinars for their buildings. I think it's critically important that we open it up to our community members in those buildings to ask questions that are specific and pertain to the separate building. And we do have a consistent set of protocols and processes in place that is attached to this document. You know, it's only probably 40 pages, but then if you click on the documents, the links, you're going to find another 30 pages of information that helps, will help individuals understand the buildings even more of what's happening.
Which we will be updating pretty regularly.
Yeah, I mean.
Now and after the start of school likely, because the whole situation, there are many parts of it that are going to be constantly changing and fluid. And so we do, that's a live document. I mean, not what we submit necessarily on Monday. That's about the decision that we made to go forward with this hybrid model. But as far as questions, answers, details, we expect to be working with that document all the time so that those links remain live and that people can go on there. And people may even go on there and find some things that were not addressed and bring to our attention, and we'll be happy to address them.
Yeah, and to that point, Lori, I mean, even today, Mike and I were on with the commissioner again. You know, he called an emergency meeting yesterday for today to have conversations about some things that are happening that will be coming down the pipeline over the next two weeks, like mobile testing opportunities for students and faculty and staff. So that's something that's being discussed at the state level. And if you can only imagine the logistics it's going to take if we're to potentially test all educators and students and what that may look like. The decisions about athletics, that will be forthcoming. The decision with regard to closures based on positivity rates within a community is important. He shared a Johns Hopkins slide with us today on looking across the entire United States and which states should be focused on opening at least partially for kids. Well, Massachusetts happens to be one of those states. And that's based on a 5% positivity number of COVID cases within a community or a state, a hotspot, if you will. You know, in Ashland and Massachusetts has been consistently below that the whole time. So, or since we got under the number, so. So that stuff is all coming and has to be incorporated into the overall document. And again, my meeting with Audrey LaCroix every Monday. We're finding new things to add from a health and safety perspective. So it has to be a living document.
Any other questions or comments, Kathy?
Yeah, it's just funny, with the buses, Jim, do we have to change anything with that, our contract or anything? Or is it, it's the same as.
Chris, yeah, we're actually, we are looking at that, yes. Partly because, Kathy, we've gone from 180 school days to 170 school days. We're looking to add one more run to add for spacing of time of kids and staggered starts, because we're changing the start time for the middle school, for three of the four, all four schools, but breaking out the middle and the high school. So yeah, so those are conversations that are ongoing with the business managers and transportation companies.
Yeah, okay.
And again, if we go to a full remote, that's another, you know, contract conversation we have to have a conversation about.
Other questions or comments? I know this isn't news. We've been floating around this idea for a while and looking and working with the document and giving our consensus already that we wanted to move forward with this model, and we needed to see how it was all put together. And I know that everybody's been working tirelessly to get us that information and to put the plan together. And we appreciate you all very much for that. We're very lucky to have the leadership that we have here in Ashland and the administrative team and all the educators. And everybody cares about doing this in a way that will make the staff comfortable and students comfortable and parents comfortable. Parents who are not comfortable coming back for the hybrid option will have the option to come remote. And the school committee and Mr. Adams have already decided that coming back full-time in person and meeting the guidelines is not something that we comfortably do right now. So we're moving forward in the best way that we know how. And at some point, very shortly, we're going to take a vote. So I just want to ask one more time whether anybody has any concerns about the plan, any comments, any questions, before somebody offers a motion. Jim?
I do.
Yes.
I think it's important to note within the plan itself that there's more than one option, right? So obviously, we had to look at the in-person, we had to look at a hybrid, we had to look at a remote. But then there's the fourth option, which is the remote-only learning academy. But then there's the fourth option, which is the the old remote only learning academy, which has been really working on, uh, in making this. To be a um, a viable option. K through five, it looks very different than six through twelve. Partly, and I've had this conversation because not only the numbers themselves, uh, but because of staffing and how we approach middle and high schools. Uh, with this different, um. Uh, levels, different course requirements, math, science, English, history, they're all separate teachers who teach those, right? So. Um, the, I wanna be clear, the six through twelve will be a an outside platform. That's not run by Ashland Public School teachers. Our teachers aren't teaching those courses. And a lot of those courses, the majority of those courses tend to be more asynchronous than they are synchronous. So, and I've made that clear within the document. Um, you know, for those at the high school who've had virtual high school classes, that's. Um, wouldn't be shocking to them, but anyone who is uh still thinking they want remote only six through twelve. Uh, I've made it clear in a number of communications, um, that at this point, uh, we are using an outside vendor. Um, because we just financially, it doesn't make any sense to, we'd have to add an entire team of teachers. Uh, at the middle school, uh, to create it just to the academy there.
Jim, with that, then what, I I know we've had some teachers say, you know, medical reasons or otherwise, they're not coming back, so then what? The teachers for six through twelve that have said they're not gonna be in the building. How are we leveraging their skills in the absence of using them for RLA at that upper level?
So they are still going to be responsible for teaching their classes, Erin. Um, they'll just do it remotely from home. And we have to find a way to proctor, um, their classes, so their kids would be in the classroom. Uh, and we would have an adult in the classroom, a super supervisor aide or some, I mean, in the classroom with the, the. Why am I blanking on the word? The projector on, um, so, so, and and the students, again, all students. Um, will have, we will be a one-to-one community, and that's another policy that we've gotta talk about, Paul. It's part of the whole process too, right? Um, that every, every student will have a Chromebook that can can function. Um, and that's, you know, that's part of it, but they have every right medically to be home. Uh, they all wanna work. Um, I have not received one, um, teacher that said, I just wanna take the medical, which they could do. They said, I wanna take the medical and still participate in this remote process. It just, it it just means we have a lot of scheduling, um, at Dave and Kelly are gonna have a lot of scheduling. Um, I don't call them nightmares, but, um. Daydreams there. It's more nicer than night, when nightmares.
Um, and then as far as the commitment date, um, through January twenty-nine.
Yeah.
On, um, have we checked with legal about the, uh, about the legality of requiring a decision like that? And then two, why would you not cut it off, even though for the terms, it makes sense. When you think about when like midterms and finals are for the upper grades.
Yeah.
For the lower grades, the middle of the year point feels like Christmas break.
But it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it it's not, I I mean, Pete and I, we did have that conversation about, um. You know, do we move the elementaries to to quarters instead of the trimesters and we're gonna keep that, all that stuff the same. We have to understand it's gonna be fluid. Um, i- and i- and if a family gets into this in three or four weeks in, um, and says, I can't do this. There, we have the obligation to bring them back in. Okay, I mean, that's, I mean, to answer your legal question, uh, that's what we have to do. Um, it's like a homes, just like a homeschool student. They decide they don't wanna be homeschooled anymore, there's no real time commitment. We're just trying to to make it so it's. We wanna look at the data, the COVID data, and thinking these, you know, these increments, and we have a lot of half-year courses potentially at the high school. That that were, works well, um, is, so it it's sort of a. There has to be a commitment, I guess, and it's easier for us to start grouping now. Uh, what we don't wanna be is blindsided on day one. With us grouping all these students and then people coming back and saying, um, I wanna be back in the school.
And then I I think we talked about this last meeting, but I wanna make sure that I'm reading this version of the document correctly. As far as the quarantining.
Yep.
So, and we, you had said previously, it is a small radius. So if a student were sick in the front row, and the teacher is approximately six feet from that child. The teacher, the teacher would then have to quarantine for ten to fourteen days.
So, again, um, I would follow all of the guidelines that that are outlined, and so. Specific ones like that, um. I would have, I mean, I I'd have to pull up the document, and that's what the nurses are for, to be honest with you, Erin, um, to walk through it.
Well enough in the document. I don't feel like the close contact or, um, had. Has been in contact with a symptomatic person, like, that's not, to me, it's not defined well enough to say what radius and. To try to understand, like, are we going to end up with a, a, a sub shortage?
Sure, well, yeah, we are. We, we absolutely, subs are going to be almost impossible to get. We are going to be hiring. Um, a number of long-term, um, paraprofessionals who will be focused on using as subs and proctors. Um, for this case in 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 this purpose. But the way it's defined in the, in the state, in the document is being close contact means being within six, less than six feet. Of 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 a COVID case for at least ten to fifteen minutes. Close contact can occur while caring for, living with, visiting or sharing. So we're using the CDC or the Department of Public Health, um, definitions. That's how they define it.
Um, right, that's not our language, Erin, that's, I do recall, I was gonna jump in saying that I recall, um, reading from the. The guidance that was submitted to us before we even made these plans, which, I mean, my feeling about the guidance is that. That's the guidance for today. Uh, whether or not they're gonna change that is out of our hands, but the guidance on that currently is. Less than, if you've been in under six feet contact with somebody, you would fall up, fall into that quarantine bubble. Um, and then it would be up, I guess, to the nurses and the tracers to figure out who that was. And then up to us to figure out what to do if the teacher is in that category.
Yeah.
But, you know, the guidance could change.
We got the desk.
This is just, is is is, we're not gonna be the authors of it, and as it changes, it's gonna be. Department, State Department of Health, our Board of Health and CDC guidance, and it's included there. Almost as reference, right? Uh, but it's important to have it in there, uh, but it's, it's literally not, Jim, Jim and team are not the authors of that. It won't be the, uh, the curators and and maintainers of it. They'll be the copy and pasters of it.
Yeah, totally agree. I'm just trying to understand the impact, cause, you know, Lori and Jim and everybody before we vote is looking for. And yes, I've asked questions, but trying to understand truly the impact of like one single case and then multiple cases on. Not only the town, the resources, uh, the parents, the teachers and. What this would do and what sort of chain reaction it would set off. Um, I mean, we can, uh, table this, I understand, it's not anything in our control. I think, um. It, from a hybrid model standpoint, I can. I'll, I can support this, but it it's sad that this is what we have to vote on, and I'm not saying that's sad because. Of anything negative, Jim, you or your administration have done. It's a wonderfully thorough document, but to me. It breaks my heart to vote to put kids in kindergarten and preschool in masks, um, that they won't see smiles, they won't. See, you know, mouth movements the way they should. Um, they won't, you know, simple things like sharing. Are are not gonna happen. Um, and so it's, it's the least evil of all the options. I mean, I have my own personal preferences for why I would do it on the five in, five out, but the community and the teacher spoke on that, that. Fine, and I can support that. Um, but I do wanna say, like, there's a lot about this from a social, emotional perspective. And a growth perspective, that's just horribly sad.
Yeah, it doesn't feel right.
No.
Yeah, no, I agree, and and we've actually, it was brought to our attention today with the the Teachers Association about some, some possible. Uh, solutions to that, especially at the elementary level, and and we're going to investigate that, uh, where it, and, you know. Uh, there was, was it any CN today, Mike, and the Boston Public Schools, and Kelly could speak to that a little bit, may not speak to, may not infect her, but. Um. That there are some creative things that can be done to help with that community building component of what elementary education's all about while keeping kids safe. So, and the teachers brought it to our attention, so we're gonna investigate that. Yep, yeah, it's, it's on the tip of everybody's mind, believe me.
Yeah, can't disagree with.
Why we have Jen?
We said, Erin, yeah, it's, those are the, that's the nature of this horrible situation that we're in.
Yeah.
And I think it's the million dollar question, you know, what happens if, or even when, I mean, you know, Jim's been upfront about saying it's, we're gonna get a case. We're gonna probably have more than a case, um, and we're gonna have to respond, and I think a big part of that. Is us being ready to pivot into a rigorous full remote. Learning situation, which it's just a question of whether we go there sooner or later, I think. I mean, that's my opinion. Um, because I don't think anybody knows how this is going to go, but we certainly have some information about what's happening elsewhere. And the fact that this virus is still with us and where numbers are trending, so, I mean, I think all we can do is. Is be prepared to change the plan if this plan no longer feels like we can manage it.
Yeah, I I I I agree, and and the the only solace I take is, you know. Uh, of all that, we are not the first to be going through this, right? And if you. Uh, do look at all the information that's out there of the different countries and different places that have either not closed school. Or or have gone back, um, what we're proposing is probably the most robust. Uh, from a safety measures perspective, um, and the results of of ones that took prudent measures. Has been, uh, you know, positive, in in that they're, they haven't seen. Um, that there's been increasing cases or or anything like that, so, uh, while that does not guarantee anything, obviously. Um, it it, it does, you know, provide me some comfort with our plan and 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 a. And pride in the plan in that, you know, there's, there's, are, I mean, what the team is recommending. Yeah, goes beyond what the majority of the world that is even succeeding is doing, so. Uh, hopefully that, that, you know, gives the community some confidence as well. Um, and and there is a fair amount of information out there, um, and again, the, I I think what what Jim team are proposing. Uh, is is at least or more comprehensive than the the majority of 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 those, uh, that have already done it, so.
Now, um, before we get to September fourteenth, will we have an option to take a look at some of the other districts around the country that have opened? Or reassess whether being hybrid is still really the right decision for the district before we go forward with it? So say for example, like Georgia, I went to school this week, and say in three weeks, we see numbers spiking in Georgia, tons of schools sh- shutting down. Et cetera, et cetera. Do we have, or are we just going forward for September fourteenth?
Um, my take on that is when we ask the commissioner and and they will continue to follow the guidance and the data in Massachusetts, not what's happening in Georgia. Um, and that is what will drive the decision-making locally and at the state level. So, that, that's, you know, that's been consistent messaging. Uh, we're not gonna open. Um, you know, phases unless the the government feels it. That's why it's been so slow in Massachusetts. Uh, in terms of opening, um, the entire Commonwealth. Um, so that's what is happening. Um, I I think we need to be flexible enough, Erin, to that question. That if the data says we should be closed, that that we have to have that conversation, absolutely.
Well, and I would submit that just because the data in Massachusetts is one way. We're not having anything remotely close to an experimental group of children being together. Whereas other states will have, and we can use those data points, not necessarily as the be all and all, but as. A, you know, part of the decision, um, if we're seeing trends, not only in the south where. Things are not as locked down as Massachusetts, but as other states open up, I just think, I wouldn't personally. From a data science standpoint, that doesn't make sense to only base it on mass data if we're not having. Um, unless we have studies of all the camps and and whatnot, um, but even that's a different situation because they're outside.
And I would say, I I again, I will leave that to the, the Department of Public Health and the epidemiologists and the doctors, so. I I I can't answer that, girl, that's not what I do.
I think our, our job for today is, uh, and because we have a deadline and because we, um. Have to have some idea of of for our families and for our staff of what the plan is. In this moment, we're moving forward with what we think makes sense right now, and and in this moment, but if if we. Vote positively on this today, then we're feeling pretty comfortable that that's going to be the plan. However, you know, the school committee's gonna continue to meet, information's going to continue to come out. And I I don't think we can say right now which data points would change our minds, but I think I, at least I'm comfortable saying. That if information comes forward that we need to reflect on and and maybe make a different decision than. You know, there's, we're not, we're not saying right now, at least it's not my belief that we're saying right now, this is happening no matter what. For today, this is the decision that makes sense right now. Um, if other information comes forward that the entire school committee wants to consider. And feels strongly enough that it it changes the game, um, you know, we would never say never. So I I I think that's the best we can do for today, if that makes sense.
Yeah, as long as there's an opportunity to revisit later, that's fine.
I think it's also important that we're, right now, we're, we're approving this plan, this document to be submitted. Nothing precludes us from, and today our thought process is we're starting hybrid. You know, if August thirty-first, something needs to be addressed that would change our mind and say, hey, start remote. Because of X, Y, or Z, or if tomorrow somebody says, hey, I have the cure-all and we can go back a hundred percent. Um, you know, nothing precludes us from, from, from acting within what's outlined in the plan at any point in time.
Yeah, it's flexibility is what I I need.
Right, and it sounds like we're on the same page about that. I mean, we might be arguing at some point about what information.
What the metric is.
Right.
Right.
But but at least for now, with what we know right now, um, hopefully we can move forward and we're. It's our job to reevaluate the situation if things change, and I expect that. I'm fully expecting that this isn't the end of the conversation forever, but, uh, it certainly has to be the end for now. So that we can attempt to, uh, get back to some sort of. Plan for educating our our children and and everybody can know how to plan their childcare and. Teachers can plan their return and so forth, so. Any other concerns or questions? Is anybody ready to make a motion?
I have one, and Jim, you can let me know if this needs to be modified or added based on what you think you need from us. Um, uh, I move that the school committee authorize superintendent to submit. The reopening plan to this Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as presented. With any updates the superintendent deems necessary prior to submission on Monday, August tenth. Did you need anything additional to that, Jim?
Um, the only thing I would.
Want me to say, including start times?
Yeah, I do. I I think it's important because we are adjusting the start times for next year in order to make this work with the transportation especially and safety reasons.
Okay, so I would adjust the motion to be, I move that this school committee authorize superintendent to submit the reopening plan to the Department of. Elementary and Secondary Education as presented, uh, including the modified building start times. With any additional updates to tend to necessary prior to submission on Monday, August.
I'll second it.
Okay, and I'll go around to see, uh, how you vote. Paul Kendall?
Aye.
Aaron Williams?
Aye.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
And I for me as well. So we have our hybrid model, we have your. And aye for me as well. So we have our hybrid model. We have your start times.
We will, we will continue to clean the document up for language and consistency and voice and all of that. And it will be published to the community on Monday as it's, as it is submitted to the Department of Education.
Excellent.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, everyone, for all of your work on that.
And we'll arrange, I'll talk to the principals later. We'll arrange webinar, how to use the webinar feature so you can have your individual meetings with, uh, families, because I know they're going to want to have questions, so.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody, for.
Thanks. Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn.
No meeting tomorrow. Cancel the meeting?
No meeting tomorrow. No meeting Monday.
Meeting Monday. Okay. When, when is our next meeting?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
The normal meeting time.
The normal meeting? Okay. Got it. Okay, uh, I move that we adjourn.
Okay. A follow-up favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aye for me. Thank you very much, everybody.